All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. I apologize for our delay. We're obviously short staffed. The flu's hit us a little bit and we've got one other commissioner that is in route. But we are only gonna have four of the planning board members here tonight. So the zoning board of adjustments variances require five affirmative votes, which, six affirmative votes, which we won't get to tonight. So the Magnolia Acres variance request and the subsequent Magnolia Acres replat of lot 5A will be tabled due to lack of quorum. So if you're here to speak on those two items, those won't be heard at this time. We can proceed. We'll have to flip the order a little bit with the number of commissioners that we have here. We can hear land development hearings, conditional use permits do take four affirmative votes. So we will push those to the end of the agenda until we've got another commissioner en route. But he's fifteen or twenty minutes out. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the Washington County Planning Board Meeting, February thirteenth, 2025, to order. My name's Lauren Shackelford. I'm the chair. We'll start with roll call, please.
Absolutely. Ms. Chantel Poirier.
Here.
Robert Daughtry, he's coming. Lauren Shackelford.
Here.
Joe Maynard is out. Anthony McNutt is out. Jay Piercy.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you wanna kinda start us off, Sam?
Yes, so I'm gonna just look, try, try my best like to start like the projects like backwards. So we have one project, which is like the Devil's Den. Large scale, we cannot hear until we hear the CUP. So we'll do everything and then go back to the CUP and come back to you. Let's start with...
Let's start with the approval of the amendments from the previous two meetings. Those have been out for your review. Anybody have any questions or concerns with those?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move on with new business as mentioned. We'll skip the conditional use permits for now. We'll start with land use hearings, land development hearings. In the county, we have the Johnson Minor Subdivision.
Lauren, we need to approve the agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So the agenda stated, hopefully you guys are kinda following along. We're gonna do land developments first with item G replat of Magnolia sub, Magnolia Acres subdivision tabled and item H moved to the end. And then, once we do that, we'll go back to conditional use permits.
Make a motion to approve the new agenda.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, Sam.
So which, which project we need to start with?
Let's start with Land Development County Johnson Minor Subdivision.
All right, let's find it first.
Yeah, you come up with the page number, holler it out.
All righty, Johnson Minor Subdivision. This is the vicinity map of the project. Come on, let's think.
Oh, I lost everything.
That's interesting. Let me restart this. I don't know why. It's a PDF, should work.
He said forty-three?
Yeah. All right, here you go. So that's the site map of the project. That is the neighbor map that's been notified, the neighbors have been notified. And so the applicant basically is requesting a minor subdivision approval to divide the six point two-two acres parent parcel into two tracts. After the proposed split, the new tract one would be two point four acres and new tract two would be three point seven eight acres. The project parcel lies solely within the Washington County and is not in any planning area. To date, planning staff received two neighbor complaints about opposing the project. The first one, the, and they saw, they saw the problem. Runoff issues that is impacting neighboring properties, existing and healthy living conditions on the property, squatting by transients, and property has limited untidy services, so...
Okay.
And here are like the planning conditions and the biggest deal about this project that the owner or the property, property owner or the applicant are responsible to secure all the signatures from the utilities and the health department before like the planning staff can approve and finalize the project.
Okay. All right, is applicant and applicant's representative here? If you would, please state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about your project.
My name is Gene Buscher with Survey One and we were surveyors on this property. But I didn't put myself down as an applicant. Mr. and Mrs. Johnson are here if they, if you got questions from them.
Okay.
But I can maybe address anything on the survey itself.
So is there, there's a structure in a driveway on track two. Is there one on track one as well?
No, no.
But the picture seems to show there's a building in the, I assume that's the northwest corner of the property?
Yeah, it's across the line. It's about two foot north of the line.
Okay. What am I missing? So that's not...
I don't think the GIS is exactly accurate.
Okay, all right, appreciate it. Any questions of the surveyor on this? Okay, appreciate it, sir. We may ask the applicant, we're gonna take public comment and then we may ask the applicant to address that. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it. Back, back to the applicant. Have you heard, have you talked to the neighbors that voiced concern?
There has been concern.
If you would, please state your name and address for the record. I'm sorry.
Robert Cindy Johnson.
There's been concern voiced from us because we got this property. There was issues with people. I'm assuming homeless people standing out there and the property just was trashed. We had those people off and actually our realtor is actually in the process of getting quotes to try to get, it seems to be the, what tract did they call? The one that's got all the...
Six point seven acre.
Yeah, it's the one that's gonna need the movers cleaning. We're, we're working on it.
Okay.
And actually, we're planning on building a home there. The other individuals who are taking the other tract will build a home there. So obviously, it's not just gonna be sitting there for someone to move into the barn or, so, yeah.
Okay, and you've seen the conditions for approval that have been proposed. You're good with those?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant from board? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Get running water and stuff and maybe get them homeless people.
Okay. All right, I will bring it back to the board for action.
Make a motion to approve the Johnson Minor Subdivision as presented.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Next is, I guess would be item F, Amador Minor Subdivision?
Yes, sir. So this is the Amador Minor Subdivision. That's the vicinity map where it's located. And this is the site map of the property close-up, neighbor notification map. So the applicant is requesting a minor subdivision approval to divide the three acres parent parcel into two tracts. After the split, tract A and B each will be like one point five acres. The project parcel lies within the Washington County, completely not in a planning area. And to date, the planning staff has not received any complaints about the project. The condition is similar to the previous one. The applicant is responsible to secure all the signature from the utility and the health department. And it's like the health department, the septic is the biggest deal like with them to deal with. So the area has been disturbed many times. So that would be like, it might take a while.
Okay, but that's the responsibility?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, like we cannot sign off on the finals until like they secure all the signatures.
Okay, all right. Is the applicant or applicant's representative here? Hello, how are you? Would you please state your name and address for the record, sir?
Alan Reed, Fayetteville, Arkansas. I'm here representing Amadores on this track split. And I think Sam's pretty clear on what we're trying to do here. We've got a three acre piece divided into two. And we've got a recorded easement for access and utilities along the north side of the adjoining property. And the front lot will front on White Oak Road. We did receive some work from Wiggins Environmental on the protest. I think it kinda came in late to get into your packet, but I think Sam probably has a copy of it for you.
Yes, sir.
And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So you anticipate tract A to be ingress and egress off of White Oak Road and tract B would go up that thirty-foot egress, thirty-foot utility egress easement to the north, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant on this request from board? Okay, anybody in the public like to make public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board for action.
Make a motion to approve the Amador Minor Subdivision as presented.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item G has been tabled, so we'll move on to, actually, H goes to the end.
Yeah, it goes to I.
So let's go on to I, desert sand commercial building preliminary large-scale development. Sam?
Absolutely. Desert sand commercial like preliminary large-scale development. This is the vicinity map. This is the site map and this is the neighbor notification map that neighbors have been notified. That's a big project, so the applicant is requesting a pre-large-scale development permit to replace two existing chicken houses with an existing fifteen thousand eight hundred square foot metal commercial building and adding a twenty thousand square foot like steel structure to commercial flex spaces. The CUP was approved, it's, it's existing on that, we approved the CUP on July eleventh for like the entire area. And it was ratified on August fifteenth. This permit is, this permit is like to allow the applicant to operate the existing building and add like another building to the, next to it. The pre-LSD, if the pre-LSD is approved, the applicant will like, is required to apply for a final large scale when the whole thing is like done. To date, planning staff has not received, has received only one comment and complaint about the project from the neighboring adjoining neighbor and he said like that's a traffic, it's gonna be increased on the property. And he feels that like having a commercial building in like an area that is surrounded by basically residential areas like incompatible, so... Each of the buildings unit will be available for rent and therefore the type of like the business and number of employees will vary. The applicant anticipates that many of the renters like will be carpenters and woodworkers and countertop looking to store like large equipments. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, with potential for some after-hours work if needed. Both buildings will have a total of like seventy-nine gravel parking areas are expected with approximately like fifty-one hundred square foot. Ten of them are like ADA van accessible parking spaces with ramps. We have like, for the building, the first building, the applicant had to go like through retrofitting everything to meet the fire and electric safety. And so this is like building one life safety plan. And he, he did this through like an architect company. And this is building two life safety plan. And this is the firewall that's gonna be an electrical like boxes simply, so the firewall basically is gonna work instead of a fire suppression system and that is approved by the state. And we have a bunch of conditions from like the fire department, Wheeler Fire Department. And we've been back and forth with them and I guess like the applicant is aware. Yeah, that's why he paid that much money. And the planning condition, basically standard condition for large scale with like an extra one for safety fire requirements needs to meet like the state requirements and approved by the Wheeler Fire Department.
Okay. All right, Sam, if you would, just give us a quick little refresher. So the conditional use permit has been approved.
Yes, sir.
And verified. So the, the use of the property, the commercial use of the property is really not what we're looking at tonight. We're looking at the specific buildings as proposed.
Yes, sir.
And a pre-LSD.
Yes, we're approving the plans, so he can follow, like he started constructing the second building and retrofitting the first one, which has already been most likely done. And...
And then the final LSD will come back to us once?
Whenever like everything is done completed and we, yes, sir.
Make sure it's built to code.
And the engineer on the project is here and like the property owner and the project like manager is here as well.
Okay, so you understand, okay. All right, just wanna kinda clarify that. Okay, is the applicant here? Our applicant's representative?
I'm James Girth with EDA, the Engineer on Project, here to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also here.
Okay, great. I guess we'll start, I'll start with the Wheeler Fire, all the fire conditions, the, everything that's addressed there. You guys were aware of all that and agreement with all of that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. What are the questions, board? Yeah, there's, there's a lot of them. The one question I did have, if, if it's gated keys or keypad, the code has to be provided to the Wheeler Fire Department. Are you planning on, is your applicant planning on gating coding this?
I believe if we are, we'll be using a Knox box for fire access.
Okay, okay.
I mean, this is one of the standard like condition because like you, you never know, maybe now they won't do it, but like in the future, they might. So if there's any gated like code, like the fire department needs to have access to it. And the like Knox boxes like standard, I guess.
Yeah.
Everyone knows.
We'll have one for the gate and one for the buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, and kinda the same thing, Sam. None of us are experts on sprinklers or any of that.
Yeah, that, that's why we have, we have the firewall instead. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay, any questions of the applicant or the representative? We may ask you guys back. We appreciate it. I'll open it up to public comment now. If there's anybody here that would like to make public comment on this item, please let me know. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Again, I'm sorry, there's a lot of conditions. We got twenty-four, twenty-five conditions. That's a little bit out of the norm, so give me just a minute to read through these. Yeah, it is. I mean, it's, most of it's regulated by other entities that have a whole lot more expertise than we do.
Yeah, there's lots of changes happening to the fire code, so that, that's just like in case if they take like their time. They take their eighteen months period like constructing all of this. They're like aware to have everything like accepted by the fire department. And as, as mentioned before, like they've been working with Wheeler Fire like chief and captain. And that's why like it took them since August until now.
I assume that all the, all the conditions in red were recently added by the fire?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And like, the final is not gonna be approved until like these conditions are met.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, any questions from board on this project? We'll change it up a little. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Sam?
Yes, sir.
We wait on Bob at this point, right?
Oh, yeah. He should be here. Like I don't know what time it is now. It's...
Okay, again, I apologize for the uniqueness of this meeting, struggling getting enough commissioners. But we will take a recess for a few minutes until we get another board member here and we can proceed with the other items. So I'll call the meeting to order as soon as possible.
Thanks for your patience, guys.
I'm going to call to reconvene the meeting. Um, we're not, I, do you want to do roll call since he's here?
Yes.
Okay, let's do roll call again since we have an additional member here. Sam, please.
You want to check the board?
Here.
Trump does for a year.
Here.
J P C?
Here.
And Walker Draper?
Here.
All right, we have four members here now, so we can hear conditional use permits. We will go back to the CUP section of the agenda, starting with county. I believe we have four CUPs tonight. Moonlight on the White Rental CUP, Arkansas Mailing Services Conditional Use Permit, Hogeye Wireless Communications Conditional Use Permit, and Devil's Den Proving Ground Conditional Use Permit.
And then we jump to the, uh.
And then we'll go back to the land development hearings and hear the final item, which will be Devil's Den Proving Ground Preliminary Large Scale Development Phase One. All right, Sam, let's start with Moonlight on the White Rentals, please.
Absolutely. Uh, so this is the vicinity map for the conditional use permit application. Uh, this is like the, uh, the blue man for the site map. And this is the moonlight, the neighbor notification, like the neighbors have been notified mostly it's the, uh, government. Uh, and so the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit, uh, to use existing properties to facilitate, uh, daytime kayak canoe and fishing gear rentals on a four point three eight acres property. Only point seven five acres will be used for dividends. The property currently has five hundred twenty-five square foot, uh, one bedroom cabin, uh, forty by twenty storage shed, and eighty forty by twelve livestock shed. The property owners, oh. Sorry. The property owners, uh, intend to share this property benefits with, um, others through a, through river floating and fishing access. Hours of operation from six AM to eight thirty PM during spring and summer months and seven AM to five PM during fall and winter months. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about this project.
Okay, um, and I believe this is right outside City of Goshen Planning, but I did want to alert the board that I am also serving on Goshen Planning Commission. If anybody thinks there's any sort of conflict there, I'll be happy to recuse. Okay, is the applicant or the applicant's representative here?
Hi.
If you would, please state your name and address for the records.
Sure, Kristy Stiggy from Fayetteville, Arkansas.
Okay, tell us a little bit about your project.
Uh, so like Sam said, we own a property that's riverfront, currently using it for Airbnb only, but would like to extend that, um, available to the public use for fishing, kayaking, uh, and canoeing.
Okay, all right. Um, any questions from board members of the applicant? Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody in the public like to make public comment on this request? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Make a motion to approve the moonlight on the White Rental CUP as presented.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on, Sam, let's look at the Arkansas Mailing Services CUP, please.
Absolutely. Uh, Arkansas Mailing Services, uh, vicinity map. This is the site map and this is like a neighbor notification, like area map. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to move their business into an existing facility that currently housed by Kramer Detergent. I'm pretty sure like we're familiar, familiar with this. The CUP would be for like a commercial mailing business that offers services to businesses for all their printing, mailing, shipping, and equi- equipment needs. The facility parking lot will contain thirty-five parking spaces with three ADA parking spaces. Hours of operation is going to be Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. There will be eight to ten employees on site expected. This project will utilize only two acres of like six point, uh, zero eight acres property. To date, the staff has not received any complaints about the project. And as obviously you can see, they did not construct anything, so there is no large scale requested because the building is already existing. We're just like changing the use from a detergent company to a mailing services. Uh, planning conditions are standards.
Okay. Is the applicant?
Yeah.
If you would, please state your name and address for the.
John Jones from North Elrod, Arkansas.
Yes, sir. Okay, are you the owner of the property, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all right, so it's basically just changing out one tenant for another, is that correct?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay. No other, no modifications to the property or does it exist now or drive, start, street, driveway, parking lot, anything like that?
No, everything will be staying on that, just on the insides where we'll just do some remodeling in there to put some offices and stuff in.
Okay, all right. Any questions of the applicant from board? Okay, appreciate it, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Open it up to public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to address this item, please let me know. Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the conditional use permit request for Arkansas Mailing Services to.
Got a motion? All second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, Sam, Hogeye Wireless Communication Facility.
Absolutely. So this is the vicinity map for the project. This is the site map for the project. And the neighbor notification map did not populate, uh, but we have it, they're already being, uh, notified. So the applicant is, uh, folk foster, uh, on behalf of Verizon Wireless. They are requesting conditional use permit approval to allow the operation of a new wireless communication facility on a parcel that is currently zoned for agricultural and single family residential use, one house per acre. The property is owned by the Barton Muse Family Trust. The applicant will lease a hundred by hundred foot like area with a thirty foot like access utility easement. Uh, the actual facility will be seventy feet by seventy feet and fenced. The entrance to the facility will be through like a twelve foot like wide gate, which will be locked. The, the applicant is, uh, proposing, uh, the construction of like three hundred, three hundred oh five, uh, self-support tower within the facility. The tower will be, will support three wireless service providers. There will be a ten feet lightning rod, which will increase the, uh, overall like height of the tower to three fifteen. Um, the applicant stated that they are unable to collocate, uh, on other existing towers due to the lack of towers in the area. There aren't any towers in the area or towers like exist that need, meets, um, the rising criteria for colocation, and that's why they're building a new one. And you can see like the nearest tower like locations and distances, and that's a nearby tower like heights. So they are like within the limits of, of everything. Uh, this is like the setback from the road. Of course, like when we do conditional use permit for, um, cell towers, we do also like administrative review. And this is part of the administrative review that they have to meet the conditions for. So the setback from the road, nearby residences and nearby residences like, um, against the tower like has been met. Uh, the previ- uh, previously, uh, twenty, the project, the CUP twenty, during twenty twenty-three forty-seven CUP project was approved by the planning board, uh, on the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one and ratified by the Quorum Court on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And there is an ordinance for it. Uh, the twenty twenty-one one oh four administrative review was approved on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Since twenty twen- that, since the CUP has been approved, the project has never been initiated within eighteen months, therefore the current CUP application was required. And I cannot tell like what happened, but I'm pretty sure like that was during the height of COVID, so that was like one of the stuff that like restricted them from continuing. Uh, since like twenty twenty-one, we had like a new flood map, uh, and, uh, so that parcel became part of, covered with the flood plain and that we require, requested them to apply for a flood plain permit, and they did. And so the twenty twenty-four four eleven flood permit for this property was approved by the planning department on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. To date, planning received like one complaint from the adjacent neighbor citing that the, um, location of the tower is not favored for him because it's like in front of his house, which is like to the northwest property. Um, the U S Fish and Wildlife Service data indicates that the proposed facility is not in any wetland or marsh areas, so there is no conflict there with the government. And here are like the standard planning conditions, so.
Okay. So on the nearby residences, the, if I'm reading that right, the closest, the closest structure is the gas station, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's not a resident, doesn't count.
Okay, make sure I got my bearings, I know where I am. I drove out and looked at this, so. Okay, is the applicant or applicant's representative here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Ralph Wang Garden from Falken Foster, fourteen twenty-eight Trailside Court Northwest, Grand Rapids, Michigan, um, here for the conditional use permit applicant, the Towers LLC, doing business as Vertical Bridge. Um, I also wanted to thank Sam for all his work on this project.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the, the first one that was approved, Verizon Wireless directly applied for that, and then lately to kind of preserve some of their capital expenditures, instead of sinking their own money into building the site, they've transferred it to what they call a build-to-suit company, which constructs it and operates the tower and then leases space to Verizon. So in this case, the technically the applicant is the Towers LLC, doing business as Vertical Bridge. They got sites all over the country, work with the major providers, and in this case, Verizon has got a contract to have the top spot on that tower, and then they'll work diligently to fill the other spots with other providers.
Is there, is there structure for three carrier, are three providers on the tower?
Yeah, I'm guessing they could do more or probably strengthen it for more, but just depending on what systems are out there, I'm sure AT&amp;T and T-Mobile maybe are, are out there. I'm not sure about Dish Network.
Okay.
Um, they would definitely accommodate it. Um, this is a large parcel, just under fifty acres. It's kind of in the Illinois River bottom land area there, so I did drive out there. I didn't see any houses in the immediate vicinity. I tried to look up the neighbor who raised a concern, and I believe he's, if you curve around on the road to the north and then the west, I didn't see a real view of the tower from that area when I drove out there, but, um, but it is a big parcel. It's kind of clustered near the existing utility line that runs through there. Um, there's already a gate on Hogeye Road that it would enter through the same access point. Um, and then being in an open field, it wouldn't involve extensive grading or tree removal or anything kind of thing like that. Um, in terms of community benefit, it'll fill a gap here, um, from just general convenience. People want to work at home, learn at home, um, but more critically, public safety. Um, the National Emergency Number Association says at least eighty percent of calls come from wireless devices these days.
Mm-hmm.
And so in terms of emergency notices, Amber Alerts, weather stuff, um, nine-one-one calls for accidents, fire, flood, health events, um, it'll, it'll definitely bring that area up to speed, uh, to where they can do that. Um, so I guess I'll just end it for now for there.
Okay, I appreciate it, yeah, so.
Yep.
I mean, obviously, and I, you know, it's, the recommendation referral is to colocate where possible.
Yeah.
My understanding is there's not a colocation here, so.
That's correct.
I think it's very beneficial to have the capacity to colocate on this for the next several users to.
Yep, and we did read the conditions proposed in the staff report, we're in agreement with those as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and the staff report has more information than the presentation, of course.
Okay, any questions of the applicant from board members? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to the public if anybody would like to address this item. Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board for action.
Make a motion to approve the Hogeye Wireless Communication CUP as presented.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move on. Devil's Den Proving Ground CUP, Sam?
Devil's Den, uh, CUP, uh, vicinity map. This is like the site map, uh, and this is the neighbor notification. So basically, the applicant owns like almost everything, everything there like we notified like one person. Uh, so the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit and a large scale development to renovate the visitor's center on the former C four site to create a sixteen thousand square foot office building, office building. It's expected that the project will be, uh, completed in two phases. Uh, phase one, the renovation of the existing building, and phase two, the new addition to the east of the existing building as well as the parking lot. This project will require large scale development approval if the CUP is approved. Uh, hours of operation would be Mondays through Fridays from eight AM to five PM with about twenty-five to thirty employees, uh, in the near future. This site will include vehicular like access to existing and new building additions, vehicular like drop off, access plaza, fort, um, forty on site, uh, permeable paver, parking spots, two ADA parking spots, one van accessible, uh, roundabout, and fire truck turn back. Middle courtyard, service access, road for septic field, native landscaping, and, uh, pond improvements. To date, planning has not received any complaint about this project. Uh, so you will see like lots of, like this is the overall site plans, there is multiple of them, as, as we mentioned, it's going to be in two phases. And the planning condition, uh, are like standards basically according to their application.
Sorry, we're all trying to figure out what a C four plan is, so. I didn't know we had a nuclear power plant in Washington County, Arkansas.
Oh, man, it's been.
Until I googled.
It's been there for a while, it's been dismantled by the government and it's clean and everything.
All right, all right, I shouldn't have known that, but I didn't, I apologize. All right, any questions of staff or board members? Okay, is the applicant here?
Uh, yeah, I'm Michael Davis. I'm the project architect with Marlin Blackwell Architects, Fayetteville, Arkansas.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so you've got an existing structure, you're converting to office space and that building a new structure, correct?
Yes, yeah, there's, so there's a, about a ten thousand square foot addition planned on to the existing building, um, to accommodate the, the office use, um, that the owner needs.
So there's a six thousand square foot building here and you're adding ten to make it sixteen?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay. All right, I apologize if I interrupted.
No. Um, I think Sam covered it pretty well in terms of our general plans for the property, and really we're trying to just kind of stay where there's existing development already on that property, um, and, um, you know, bring in a new use to, um, what was actually a pretty historic site for this area. If you're not familiar with the C four project that GE did, it's worth looking up, it's a pretty interesting, um, pro- program that, that they had here, so. Um, but, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you all may have.
Okay, you've seen the conditions of approval, you're good with all of that?
Yep.
Okay, any questions of the applicant from board?
We, we worked with the applicant since like we first met, I guess like last May.
Yeah, we've been working with Sam on this for.
We've been working with him for almost a year.
For like eight, nine months, so we thank Sam and his staff for all their help on this, and, um, it's, it's been a fun process.
All right, I appreciate it. Okay, I'll open this up for public comment if there's anybody that would like to make public comment on this conditional use permit as proposed. Okay, seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Devil's Den Proving Ground.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then moving on to what I believe is the last item is the adjoining, we're just flipping back now to land development hearing.
It's going to be H.
And we're going to hear item H, Devil's Den Proving Ground Preliminary Large Scale Development Phase One.
One more?
All right.
Yes, there you go.
Somebody's number hollered out.
I don't know why this, that did not populate as well. Uh, so. I don't know why did that, did not populate as well. So this is the Devil's Den Proving Ground like pre-LSD Phase One. As we mentioned, it's gonna be done in two phases. That's like the phase, the first phase, site map, neighbor notification, like neighbor area map. So the applicant is requesting a large-scale, pre-conditional use permit and like a pre-large scale for the previous like former C-four site location, creating a sixteen-thousand-square-foot like office building. It's gonna be in two phases, and this pre-LSD is requiring like a final LSD with the whole, when the whole of two phases are done. The overall site plan, as mentioned, is gonna have, like the site is gonna have about like twenty-five to thirty employees, Mondays through Fridays, hour of operation from eight AM to five PM, same, same location, same everything for like the parking spaces. Extra stuff, like you're gonna see like the landscape plans, the overall utility plans for the site, and they're gonna have like some demolition, so they can renovate and rebuild, so there is like the plans for it. The grading and drainage plans are included, and for like both sites, like as, as we mentioned, like this is phase one and phase two, and the conditions are like still the same, and any comment, any comments, any questions?
The only question I got, so this pre-LSD is just for the remodel of the existing building only, correct?
Yes, for the, the first phase.
Application, another process for the new building?
Oh, yeah, this is like for the first, first phase, and if they're gonna do anything else, let's go back here.
Yeah, so that would be, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, if it'd be anything, if we do anything further on the property? So this LSD submission is for the renovation and the addition?
Yes, sir.
But as of right now, there's, that's, that's all we have planned for the current, current scope of the project.
So this will cover the renovation and new building?
Yes, sir.
There's a potential for a phase two, if and when you guys ever decide to do more, you'd have to come back?
Yes.
Okay, I just was a little confused there. Okay, any questions of commissioners from staff? Okay, if you would, please state your name again for the record?
I'm Michael Davis, Fayetteville, Arkansas.
Okay. Anything different than what we heard on the other side that we need to know about?
Nope.
Okay, questions of the applicant on the pre-large-scale development? You've seen the conditions of approval as proposed here as well, okay. Sam, on landscaping, we have directions through our, how is that handled?
Landscaping is all done like and reviewed by like the architects, and it's been like reviewed by our engineers, and we had no issues with it. And just like to clarify, since this is like a tandem project, like CUP LSD, the CUP needs to be ratified before they start construction.
Okay.
And since we never had like any issues, most likely it's gonna be on the next Quorum Court. I'll, I'll keep you posted, so we can like get it ratified and move on.
Okay, alright. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, anybody would like to make public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Got a motion for approval as presented?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Sam, what am I missing? Is that it?
I guess we covered everything. We're still discussing everything for the new planning and zoning code with the Quorum Court. Nothing has materialized yet, so the next meeting is gonna be on March third. We'll see what that, where that leads. Other than that, thanks, Jay, for accepting to become like our co-chair.
Oh, that's news to me.
Yes, you are co-chair. And thank you for your participation. We're glad you're here and serving, so look forward to working with you. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.